If it's used perfectly, if it's not used perfectly it screws up so. Right, okay, so item one, sorry, good evening councillors, sorry for the delayed start. So, item one minutes, may I sign the minutes, the minutes that are held on the 27th of November and 17th? Thank you. Apologies for absence, Kim.
Thank you Chair, we have apologies for absence from councillors Cosa, Gray, Hunt, Ishwood, Keane and Nicholson.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? Well, Kim, are there, none have been declared so far?
None have been declared Chair.
Members, is there anyone who wishes to declare an interest in tonight's proceedings? No, okay. Are there any questions from members of the public?
None submitted Chair.
Are there any questions from members?
None have been submitted Chair.
Okay, item six, performance against government targets. As you know, this is a standard item, however, there are, in fact, there are indeed no updates since the last meeting, so they should have read that away in the agenda, so there's no, there are no new numbers to be presented tonight. So that takes us on to item seven, item A1, Woodside Park. And there are two applications. Kate, are you going to brief on these separately or altogether?
Yes, that's correct Chair, I will be doing a presentation for the two items separately.
Separately, okay, in that case we're just on item seven, Kate, could you give us a presentation please?
Yes, of course, and so if you would, could move through the slides as I'm saying them, I'll just say next slide please. Okay, so the application, the first item for consideration is an application under section 73 to remove a condition of the outline consent for the Woodside Park site. So it's WA 2018 1336 which is being amended. You'll know that there are two items on the agenda with the same site address, but as I'll explain, they are independent of each other in terms of our judgments. So the next slide you will see a site plan. The section 73 application which we're currently considering is the red outline on the plan with the area in blue also owned by the applicant. It's not come up particularly clearly on my presentation on this computer unfortunately, but it fronts on to Cattershaw Lane with Skyston's Clime to the west. And the next slide is a photo of the application site in its current conditions. The photo is just inside the hoarding line near to Cattershaw Lane. As you can see, the buildings which previously occupied the site have been demolished, which was completed at the start of last year. And I'm aware that a number of members will have visited the site. As you can just start to get a sense of from the photo here, there's significant changes in levels of the site. So you can see the side boundary fence there rising up considerably. Here I have a plan which isn't a plan for consideration as part of this application, but it's a historic plan from the original outline consent. As part of that application, the applicant submitted an indicative layout scheme, which as you will know with outlines, isn't a detail which we approve, it's just something that's submitted for our information. That indicative scheme showed a leap to be provided on site and it's the area, just if you look at the buildings along immediately fronting on to Cattershaw Lane, which is to the left-hand side of the screen. Behind two of those blocks, you can see a green area with a path running through it and that was the previously proposed indicative location for the leap. That location was far from ideal because it didn't incorporate the buffer zones which the Fields Interest Guidance asked for for leaps because of protection of adjoining occupiers from noise in effect. The application is now proposing to vary the condition which required that leap to be provided on site in order to allow it to be provided off-site. And so it's no longer proposed for the leap to be provided within the red line of the application site. And as you can see, there's a large area of land within the blue line within which a leap could be provided. The Field Interest Guidance refers to provision within 400 metres of the new dwellings which are proposed, which all of the blue line land would be within. So the detailed wording there proposing to vary, the previous condition 22 referred to the, which is the next slide, apologies for not saying, that said, "The development shall not be first occupied unless and until a detailed scheme for the specification, delivery and management of an onsite locally equipped area of play or leap has been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. The development thereafter shall be carried out in accordance with the approved details." And I am proposing to amend the wording of that condition to allow that provision of the leap to be off-site rather than onsite as a direct replication of the condition. So in terms of the material considerations for this application, which is the next slide, the sole material consideration is the acceptability of providing the leap off-site. Sorry, is it a question with regards to the?
Yes, I can't understand the proceedings, I could have to withdraw for this application, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the material consideration being the acceptability of providing the leap off-site. The policy we have which refers to the Fields Interest Guidance is quite clear that there's no wording within that documentation which says that it must be provided within the site, it just says that it should be within 400 metres of the new proposed dwellings. And I've listed here considerations which aren't material to the determination of this case. One is any issue in relation to the principle of residential development on the site because section 73 only gives us the options to consider the conditions which are attached to the consent. And also whether the concurrent application on the agenda for the leap equipment, whether or not that is acceptable, isn't material to this application. It's simply the acceptability of it being on or off-site, thank you.
Kate, you have a presentation for the second one as well, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, Zach is suggesting that we take the presentations together so we can understand, so we'll move on to their presentation.
Yes, certainly, but just to clarify, the two decisions are independent of each other.
Yes.
I can move on to the next presentation.
Yes, we'll certainly, obviously we'll come back to the recommendation separately, but.
So the next presentation is on the same slide presentation which you've got in front of you on your devices fortunately. If you just click on to the next slide, there is the introduction slide for the next application which is for the development of a locally equipped area of play including associated hard and soft landscaping. The following slide shows a location plan for that application which you'll notice is in effect the reverse of the location plan which we saw for the previous proposal. So the area which was previously outlined in red is now in blue, i.e. it's owned by the same applicant as the leap application, but it doesn't form part of that specific application. The comparatively small area outlined in red is the proposed location for the leap. And here on the next slide is an image of the proposed location of the leap. Members who've visited the site will know that at the top of the site, there's an existing lake which is with surrounding wooded areas which are substantially overgrown. So the application site in this case is near to the lake, between the viewpoint and the Wellington that you can see in the picture there, which would be protected by condition and is outside of the application site. The next slide you will see is a block plan for the proposed leap equipment showing the detail of what would be happening in the area which includes various climbing structures and slides and balancing beams, stepping stones, that sort of equipment. And the next slide after that one is photos taken from the product specifications for some of the equipment which is detailed on the plan we have just seen. And the final slide outlines the matters for consideration in relation to the leap application which are the impact on the green belt and the acceptability in principle. Because the development is for in effect a leisure facility, it meets an exceptional form of development under the MPPF which is generally allowable within the green belt. Design and impact on the visual amenity of the AGLV which the leap site is within, the proposed design offices think is visually acceptable and the extensive use of wood within the equipment would help it appear suitable within the woodland surroundings. The impact on residential amenity, the design incorporates the necessary buffers outlined in the Fields Interest Guidance from residential property and is quite a significant distance from the nearest other residential, Skyston's Clime. The proposal wouldn't result in a material increase in the number of people occupying the site in itself, so it wouldn't have an impact on the Wielden Heathes SPA. In terms of biodiversity and compliance with the habitat regulations, the application has been accompanied by ecological information which has been considered by Surrey Wildlife Trust and found to be sound. In terms of impact on trees and ancient woodland, a suitable buffer would be retained to the woodland and whilst, I believe it's six trees would be lost as a result of the proposal, within the context of the woodland as a whole, that wouldn't be significant and those trees could be re-provided elsewhere. In terms of safety, we have a limited level of control in this matter in terms of the detailed policy, but I have recommended a condition requiring that an assessment is carried out by a competent person with regards to health and safety to ensure that the leap is acceptable in that regard before it's brought into operation. With regards to land contamination considerations, because there's a noted industrial light use of the adjacent site, it's been necessary to attach a condition to ensure there's no harm to particularly aquatic life as a result of the proposal, so that's also recommended and satisfactory. And finally, in terms of the quality of the play provision, because it's within a green belt and justified as it's leisure, then it needs to provide a suitable play environment which we consider that it does and they're the material considerations, so thank you for listening and that's everything.
Could someone just remind us the reason why we're doing this? I know it's all written in the papers, but can someone just give us a one-minute precis about why we have to do these applications now before the main application which of course is not tonight, we'll see at some point in the future?
So the principal application which there is a time constraint on the determination of, which is now long outside of its statutory determination period is the section 73 application. In effect, the applicant is looking for the section 73 application to be granted as quickly as possible so that the... They have submitted a reserve matters application which is invalid at this point, but if the section 73 is granted, that in effect creates a new outline consent for the site which means that that can be used in the description of the new reserve matters application as the linked case which would be most sound for the purposes of the proposal which they develop which does show the leap off-site.
Yeah, just in a nutshell, outline consent was granted previously with the leap, the locally equipped area of play shown within the site. Developers now feel they're not able to come up with a suitable scheme within the site with the leap within it and that's why they're now applying through the outline to change that condition so the locally equipped area of play is outside and at the same time they've applied for the details of the locally equipped area of play. If permission is granted tonight, it creates the new outline that the reserve matters can be registered forthwith and that will come back to members for consideration in due course.
There was an update sheet, Kate, do you want to just? One applied to this, the item B1.
Yes, so apologies there. The update sheet just refers to an amendment to condition eight which also recommends applying precautionary working methodologies in relation to dormice, i.e. when they're clearing the scrub from the site. It would be appropriate for that not to be at a point when dormice are likely to be hibernating. And the additional condition recommended proposes biodiversity compensation as a scheme from the applicant not to offset a particular impact on protected species but as a general point due to the loss of the potential habitat within the application site. So that's an amendment to condition eight and an additional condition with regards to biodiversity.
Thank you. So I think in that case we move on to any comments from members, councillor Follies.
Thank you Chair, I'm one of the two ward councillors for the area in which this is being considered and I know there was going to be some interest from the residents association in question, but I think they've not come because of it being these two very technical aspects. Firstly, I want to just support the idea that it has some health and safety checks because that's quite a deep pond now, quite a long way away from the houses and I think there is some concern about the children being quite a long way away from that considering the ages of people that are likely to be there and it being quite dangerous. Certainly some of the fences that were included in some of the original designs looked a little iffy frankly. The main issue I have, and I don't know whether this is pertinent to the planning, but planning applications in front of us, but it to me is about the rationale of why they're doing this. The outline, the indicative, sorry, the original indicative location slide which now obviously shows a version of the reserve matters application for the main site. Now that doesn't contain a leap within it. Am I right in presuming that they're intending to increase the housing numbers in it? Because where there was a leap before, there's now housing, isn't there?
No, there's no intention to increase the housing numbers on site. With the previous reserve matters application which the committee considered in, I think it was September, the leap was also at that stage proposed to be off-site. And the reason that it was felt it couldn't be catered for within the site was number one, that they couldn't provide the buffer to protect the residential amenity of future residents with it in the indicative location, but also because the current developer of the site found that the illustrative scheme associated with the outline was undeliverable in terms of, particularly in terms of the extensive underground parking which was previously proposed. And so moving that up to surface level in effect meant that there was less space within the site.
So is the balance that we're looking at then, the impact on amenity, of residential amenity in the original proposed plan by having the leap within the red line versus the impact on the green belt and other environmental aspects?
So here we're mixing up the two applications really in relation, and it's my view that the application for the leap equipment should be judged as an application for leap equipment, although it's obviously linked with the housing site, but independently the developer could provide it independently.
But the variation to condition that it depends on is material, those questions are material to that?
In relation to the section 73 application, we need to consider purely whether the change to the condition applied for is acceptable and the change to the condition applied for is to not have the leap on-site but to have it off-site. So the assessment of residential amenity forms a consideration in that that is potentially a material reason why it would be preferable to have it off-site, but ultimately as I've outlined in the report, the principal consideration in relation to the section 73 application is whether, under policy, the applicant is able to provide the leap off-site notwithstanding what came forward with the previous indicative scheme.
Okay, thank you.
Just very quickly, just to be clear, the first point you made councillor Follies, the reserve matters, sorry, the outline permission grants up to 100 dwellings and the reserve matters, any reserve matters would only be up to 100 dwellings. Should the applicant wish to apply for more, that would be a new full application that would be considered on its own merits.
Any other comments? Councillor Townsend, was it just first?
Thank you. Are we talking just at this moment with the two applications together? Which one are we deciding on at the moment about them removing the leap from the internal area?
Well, we're discussing both, I'm not trying, we will have to vote separately, but you could stick either one at the moment.
Just one thing, the leap is obviously an area for independent play, it's not for very young children. It's for children to go and play independently. And previously, you know, it has been raised about the safety and I know you say it's just a small measure of our control, however, from the point of view of the idea of putting that area of play for independent play for children right next to that lake, even if you put a fence, children will be inclined to want to climb it and if they're meant to be independently playing, there won't be particularly any supervision. There aren't many areas of play in Cattershaw Lane for other children. There aren't many areas for other children to go, so this might well attract quite a few children. And I have very deep concerns about where it is positioned. Not necessarily that it's off-site, but just off-site next to a lake is not particularly, I don't think, a very good idea. The other, I've got a couple of other points about the conditions that you've got on there and one of them is whether or not, you know the one about the runoff that you've got? I think it's about the runoff from the leap and we've put on it about, you know, that the runoff shouldn't go into the lake. On the Surrey Wildlife letter, it went into a bit more detail about it being during construction as well as post-construction. Will all of that be taken into account? Because the condition is fairly loosely worded and yet the Surrey Wildlife Trust were very keen to make sure it was during construction as well as post-construction. So I just want some assurances that that is tight enough or could be tightened a bit more. And then with referred to condition seven, which says about the replacement trees, again, Surrey Wildlife also said about replacement hedges as well. So I wonder whether or not we could, there would be, you know, if members were going to recommend this to be granted, or were going to grant it rather, that that could be tightened up and said that it was for the hedging as well. And they do go on in their letter to mention about the type of trees and it, you know, being from seed collected and raised and grown. Should that be an informative, that, that particular one about the types of seeds and that? And so apologies if it isn't informative, I overlooked it if it is in there. So that's just two things, whether or not to tighten up on the runoff and also about the planting of the trees and the native species hedge as well. But my concerns are about safety, thank you.
Thank you. Whilst our policies allow us to consider safety, the planning authority ultimately isn't in itself the competent authority for assessing health and safety. So through the conditions, we look to secure that assessment by an appropriate person to be carried out by the developer notwithstanding that they would be obliged as landowner and the provider of the facility in any case to carry out an assessment. The fact that we have that condition ensures that we're making sure that somebody who is experienced and qualified in carrying out such assessments does review the plans in detail. In terms of the comments on the conditions, in relation to the runoff into the lake and the details in relation to replacement trees and hedges, those comments can certainly be added in to the conditions in line with your comments. And in relation to adding an informative with regards to native planting and so on, again, that could be added as an informative, yes. Thank you.
If we go forward to approve this, we'll pick up those points about the conditions. Councillor Adams?
Thank you Chair, I seem to remember way, way back that in fact this proposal to put the leap there was in a very original suggestion and in fact we moved it into the site purely because of the lake next door. It is a deep lake and I for once agree with councillor Townsend. I don't think we can actually just leave it like that and say, oh, it's somebody else's problem to decide whether it's safe or not. At the end of the day, if kids get drowned there, they're going to ask us why we allowed that to happen, not some expert who just said, okay, a fence is going to be enough. So I think we have to have much more information about how they're going to keep children out from the lake. I wouldn't be happy to approve this new part, part one, I'm quite happy to approve part one, A1 it is, but not this part without considerably more information about how they're going to keep children safe from the lake, thank you.
I would just say in relation to that, the competent authority for carrying out a health and safety assessment isn't either the planning officer or the planning committee. The condition would ensure that an assessment was carried out by a competent person so that would provide for the safety of the site, thank you.
Councillor Els?
Thank you Chairman, I think I am on record on a previous occasion of saying that this is one of the most dismally designed developments I've had the unfortunate pleasure to see on this committee. But I hope that doesn't make me predetermined to this case, but it does seem to me to be brutally frank that the only reason this leap is being moved outside the site is so that Chris Nicholson can squeeze the maximum number up to 100 on the site. If the leap was still in the site, they'd have to reduce the number of houses which I don't think they could squeeze the same number on with the leap on the site. But I seem to remember during the week we had a briefing note through which suggested that if we didn't approve these applications, then Waverley wouldn't have its five-year supply and therefore we were open to being bombarded with other developments which smacks a little bit of blackmail or holding a gun to our heads. But is that true? I mean, is that the fact? Are we almost forced to approve this in order to maintain a five-year supply of housing and avoid what's happened over at Dorfold?
I hear what you say, I mean, I think blackmail is a rather strong word if I can say so, councillor Els. The note was intended to assist members and obviously it hasn't been taken that way, but the application, the point we're making is that this is a site where outline permission for up to 100 dwellings has already been approved. We've previously considered a reserve matters application so we can be fairly certain that developer wants to get on with this and so it is counted in our supply position. Obviously if we don't get these reserve matters, sorry, these applications through, it does put more pressure on other areas. That's not to say that it's a gun against your head, it's just... That's not to say that it's a gun against your head, it's just a matter of fact, we do need to deliver a certain number of homes per year. I think the key point in this instance is that they're not proposing an additional number of dwellings, it's still an outline, section 73, for up to 100 dwellings. That hasn't changed from the original outline approval, the only thing that's changed is the leap. I hear what you're saying is, is you think that by moving the leap, they can do the 100 rather than up to, but I think there's other ways of delivering the 100, but this is seen as the best way to get a decent layout for the site, albeit layout will be a matter to be considered at reserve matters, not at this stage.
Could I come back on that, Chair, please, just briefly? I'm over here. I mean, you say they could still get, I mean, what they've done is they've enlarged the developable site by moving the leap out of the site. So they've stretched the red line, if you like. And to be quite honest, that site is so packed that the scheme that was presented to us under reserve matters last time is so packed with development that I very much doubt if they had to include the leap in the site, that they could manage their 100 houses.
Sorry, I mean, obviously it's not a matter for tonight, but certainly when the reserve matters application comes in for however many dwellings, that is up to 100 maximum, that will be the time to consider whether you believe the layout and design is acceptable rather than tonight. But I do hear what you're saying, councillor Els.
Councillor Hes.
So what I'm asking myself is, if I was a young family or parent of a young family, thinking about moving to Woodside Park, would I prefer my children to play where they can be overlooked during play by some of the surrounding residences, which would appear to be the case on the drawing I've got here, 19th of July 2016, where the demarcated blue dotted line indicates the play area where surrounding properties would overlook and therefore children, if, young ones should be accompanied by a responsible adult, but children who are a little bit older would play unaccompanied. But, you know, we're aware of what can go on in playgrounds. Now, if I was a parent and I had the choice of the children playing in a safe area like that, or up the far back of the development, right up the back by a very deep pond, or is it a lake? If it was me, I'd want my children to be playing somewhere safe. And if there's no impact on housing numbers and therefore viability, then I would much prefer to see the leap staying where it is and also being able to be accessed by residents who live in Catterell Lane, who don't really have a play area anywhere near. I've read some of the objection letters. The locals would like to have access to that and might feel precluded from walking all the way through the development right up to the far back. And then there's the question of the safety of the lake, because without putting a massive great high fence up there, how are you going to keep exuberant teenagers from jumping around and having a lark? I think it's a major safety hazard personally, so that's my concern. Thank you.
Can I, I mean, the lake or the pond is a clear feature of the site, you know, it may or may not have this leap adjacent to it, but it is a pond, children do have access to it via the woodland behind the site. So the safety of the lake is something that has to be dealt with whether there's a leap there or not, it seems to me. But, yeah, councillor Follows, you're indicating.
Actually, just to very quickly respond to that point, I think I agree with you entirely that the presence of the lake does cause that issue, but at the same time, by making it a play area, it's actually then attractive to children and materially alters the health and safety issues that we're talking about. I think I should highlight a couple of other issues. Councillor Adams, I think he's entirely right, the last time this came, we did do exactly as he said. And that is why it came back into the site. And I think also councillor Els is absolutely correct in that this allows a more developable area. And I think the point about it being a fairly dismal application in the first instance, it will be materially more dismal without at least a small area of play breaking it up a bit to what it was. I suspect it is an exercise to increase the size of the dwellings, even if they can't build any more and increase their margins on it. I think the point about it being blackmail, I agree that might be too strong a word to use, but I think, I think the issue here is though, if we were to ask them, if we were to refuse this tonight, all it would do is reset the parameters back to them having to deliver the 100 homes that they have got outline permission for, sorry, up to permission for, in which case the threat to our housing delivery test is what exactly?
Yes, if I could come back to you on that one. If the leap were to be provided on the site in accordance with the Fields and Truss guidance with the recommended buffers, it would take up a very substantial portion of the site. The site is allocated in the local plan for up to 100 units, I think the exact wording is around 100 units in the plan, and it forms part of our housing land supply. If the section 73 application isn't approved, then it's likely the outline consent will lapse and it can't be included within our housing land supply. The loss of 100 units from the housing land supply could potentially have a significant impact.
May I just come back on that briefly? So if I understand this correctly, we as an authority are effectively punished for the possibility that a developer's application may lapse because outline consent was given for something that is ultimately not deliverable?
Yes.
Is that, just so I've understood that correctly?
Thank you, Chair. I think the word undeliverable is probably not one that we would use.
In this case then, why is there a problem? It's either undeliverable and therefore it's a threat to our housing delivery test, or it's not, in which case we go back to asking them to go back and deliver 100 units against their outline and, go on, please.
I would say on that point, councillor Follows, that the, as you know, in relation to the reserve matters application, there was a very thorough viability assessment. With that previous application, they were proposing 17% affordable. That found that through quite a detailed assessment, including quantity survey review, that the viability of the site was somewhat constrained to provide that level of affordable housing. So in effect, if the outline consent lapses, the viability position would be substantially affected to the negative.
Could I understand then perhaps that if they're having the leap outside of the original red line, that they'll come back with a greater amount of affordable housing because their viability position has improved?
As you, councillor Follows, as you well know, from the last application, the viability assessment assessed the implications of the underground car parking not being provided. Chair, may I just suggest that the applications that were brought before us were specifically brought before you for one, the section 73, for a technical reason. The officer has outlined that there is no technical reason that that shouldn't be approved. The second one is for the leap. Obviously, we've heard that one of the key considerations is not in terms of the ecology, it's in terms of the safety and the aspect of that. As the case officer has pointed out on planning balance and technical reasons, there isn't a reason, technical reason to refuse it on those grounds at this time. However, there are appropriate safeguards put in there to be assessed by appropriate specialists in this area. And I can suggest that any detailed design is brought back to the committee and the findings of those specialists. So the committee can then assess that report, assess the detail of it and assess whether they believe that the safety measures that have been proposed and suggested by those specialists and assessed by them are appropriate. I don't believe that this is the correct time to do that. Thank you.
Councillor Deans.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, a lot of people have talked about the safety and people will know my background, so I know concerns can be reality and I've had to deal with that reality. So for that reason alone, despite there may be technical reasons why it's right, I couldn't morally do it because I've had to deal with the sad tragic consequences, so I would have to abstain.
Councillor Dixon.
Yes, I think, as I remember this, because it came before us a couple of months ago, at the front of the site, there are two blocks of flats. I think some of them are up to three storeys high, or at least that's what we were talking about last time we looked at it. It strikes me that this playground is, would be very good for the children of those flats who haven't got any green spaces. But as somebody who's, my youngest is still only 15, so, you know, if they were under 12, you couldn't leave them to go that far from the flats to go and play. So actually, it's not a very useful play area for the young parents who are going to be on that site and in particular, living in the affordable accommodation. It would have been nice, I think, really, if they've kept the leap where it should have been by the accommodation at the front of the site where there's no gardens and that's why I think I will vote against this.
I think just to say that we're considering what's in front of members, not what your preference might be in terms of where a leap may go. I'd also point out, if you look at the location plan on the screen, there are houses that actually do face, where their fronts are facing the play area, it's not as though it's in an area that wouldn't be overlooked. There are houses that would be overlooking that and giving a level of natural surveillance there. I think I would come back to the point, and it's not blackmail, but this is an allocated site with an outline planning permission. All you're being asked tonight is whether or not a condition could be changed to allow the leap, the locally equipped area of play to be moved by a couple of hundred metres, it's still within 400 metres, easy walking distance, all of the units on that site. And I really do think that we'd be on a sticky wicket if members were to refuse this. Obviously, that's your decision, but I would be very concerned if this application were overturned.
Councillor Townsend, second time.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. Just one thing that was mentioned just there was if, say, we agreed the variation to not have the leap within the site or to get rid of that condition, and then we then had a safety inspector came and then looked at that and went nightmare, nightmare, you're never going to make that safe, it's completely the wrong place to put a leap, then we are left with no leap within the site. So we are relying on a specialist to come along to agree something which we don't even know, you're saying that we are not the authority to say whether it's good enough or not. So the only thing we are good enough to know is that we agreed originally there should be a leap within the site. We agreed up to 100 houses. I know things have changed, I know we're not speaking about that application, but one of the reasons why it's changed is because of the underground parking having to come up. So that was a material change to the site, I appreciate that. But this is area beyond the site boundary. If we agree to the change in the condition, we could end up on a safety inspection losing any alternative leap area at all.
We couldn't because condition 22, as recommended, requires details of the leap to be approved and it says that no dwelling should be occupied until the leap's been provided in accordance with the specified details. If those details aren't approved, you won't have any occupied properties there. So it is covered by the condition. It's not a question of then suddenly a safety inspector says, we're concerned about this, you can't have a leap and then you get the housing. It's not, it's intrinsically linked through condition 22 on page 18 of the agenda.
Councillor Beaman, we should speak here.
Yeah, just a simple question. Suppose you may approve this, you know, this leap in this location, who will be responsible for maintaining it? Who will be responsible for cleaning it and all that sort of thing? Is it going to be the Borough Council? Is it going to be the management committee? Town council? Has that been agreed yet?
The leap through the main legal agreement for the housing site is required to be maintained by the developer.
It would be managed.
Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to be the odd one out because I'm happy to agree that the leap can be granted offsite. If the safety thing comes up that they say no, then they'll have to provide it offsite somewhere else within, you know, whatever distance it is. There's more green land in various places, they'll have to negotiate that. I'm amazed that everybody's worried about some children falling in. The Chillingfold one, you have to have an adult for anybody under 14 in that playground and you cannot stop anybody who's over 14 bicycling up to the end there where the houses are and just going into the lake from where the houses are. So whether it's in a protected area that there should be parents or a responsible adult, it says, I think, for anybody under 14, not supervising their children, then that's their problem. But what's wrong with lakes? We've got Frenchham Ponds and all these other places, it's wonderful. I think we're really lucky to have a bit of water for children to see. And if parents don't want to look after their children, it's not my fault as a planning councillor to say no, that you can't have a leap by water. So I'm happy to remove the condition that it has to be provided within the red line, it can be provided elsewhere. There are a little bits, I don't know what the other little grey wiggly bits are up on the right hand side before the woodland, whether they could put that and they could put some equipment like Dunstfold have got, which would be lovely. But I have got no problem. Thank you, Chairman.
A couple more speakers, but I think we have, most of the points have been aired now, we can try and move to conclusion. But councillor Wilson.
Yeah, just very quickly, if we agree to the first and they bring the actual design of the leap to us at a later date, would we be able to have a safety expert bring that with them when they apply for the leap?
So the two applications are independent applications for separate determinations. So if the section 73 was approved, for example, the requirement for the developer to provide a leap would still be fully watertight in terms of the original consent, both through the amended condition and through the legal agreement of the original consent. And then the detail as to where a leap is provided and how it's provided and what safety measures are in place around it, it could in effect be a separate matter.
Yeah, so we could actually ask them to bring the safety assessment with them when they bring the leap.
Yes.
Considering the leap tonight, you're considering, there's a full application for a leap that you're considering tonight with details, subject to conditions. One of those conditions, condition three, is for the safety, safety audit to be undertaken and so details to be submitted to us. But that's done by an appropriate body, an appropriate authority on the safety grounds. But I must admit, there is, I come back to the point that your chairman made, that the lake is already there, people do have access to it already. I appreciate what you're saying is, or what certain members are saying is, by putting a play area next to it, it might potentially encourage children, but there would, there isn't any safety fencing around it at the moment, whereas there would be as part of the leap.
Exactly, that's not quite true. It's been surrounded by cordons the whole site for many, many months. And previously, it was an industrial site, which would not have attracted many children through it at all. This is materially different as a pond than it is as a bit of water up near an industrial site that's been cordon off.
Okay, repeat my, sorry, the pond is there, it's a feature of the site, it's not going away, you know, we have approved a housing site adjacent to it. It's a bit late for that problem to arise now. Councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to reassure councillor James that she's not the only odd person here tonight, there's at least two of us. Maybe we brought up our children very harshly, I don't know, but they managed to survive and the grandchildren seem to be doing well. You know, I just think we're nitpicking over, we're looking for things at the moment on this committee to nitpick over. Yes, of course, there's a health and safety issue, but it will be addressed by, as the officer said, by people who understand it. I mean, it won't be passed if it's totally unsuitable, but we can't go on looking, you know, inspecting every pipe and every, I don't know, we just seem to be concentrating on so much minutiae at this important planning committee. And I know we've got to make the right decision, but I have no problem at all with having the leap offsite or, you know, in a changed position compared to the previous one. And I'll leave the health and safety, like everybody else, down to the people that know. But, you know, I just don't see what's wrong with this, I'm sorry.
Okay, I've got councillor Adams to come back for a second time, then I think we'll move to the third. I think we've been round the hazards on this. Councillor Adams.
Yes, I mean, I think one of the differences between this lake and Frenchham Pond, for instance, is that there's actually about a 1.15 metre of wall holding up that lake at the end, just above the properties, is that right? It's about that height, isn't it? So it's not, that's not at the same level as the properties, you don't actually look out at the ground floor of those properties and straight over the land. You don't actually look out at the ground floor of those properties and straight over the lake. You look at the wall that is supporting the lake, the dam at the end of the lake. So it's quite deep in that first corner.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, is there?
Yes, just to say that the members who visited the site will be clear that the existing level of the existing hard standing is approximately level with the surface of the leap. And in effect, obviously, the detail finish rule levels are yet to be agreed. But the ground floor of the upper dwellings, which are proposed in the upper area of the site, would be approximately level with that existing hard standing, i.e. on a very similar level to the lake.
Okay, I think we can move to a vote. So we have two separate items. The first item, A1, the recommendation is that, subject to the prior completion of a legal agreement, secure carryover of the obligations from the original consent and update the obligation to maintain the leap. Conditions one to twenty-two and informative one to twenty-two, permission be granted. So the first one only. So are we able to take the vote electronically? If this doesn't happen immediately, we'll do it by hand. No, we'll do it, let's do it by hand, please. Okay, so those in favour of the recommendation, please show by hand.
Ten.
Those against?
Five against.
Any abstentions?
One abstention.
That's passed, okay, thank you. So the second item, item B1, which is the, obviously, the provision of the new leap.
Sorry, it's only a technical matter, but I've noticed a typo on page thirty-four, which is condition five of the full application for the leap, where it refers to works carried out should be completed in accordance with condition. And then there's a question mark, that's the standard text. Unfortunately, that wasn't picked up. So it should read, works carried out should be completed in accordance with condition four and should be submitted. I just wanted to clarify that before you vote.
Chairman, could I just remind you about the change in the conditions and the informative? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'll add that in. So here we have, this recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to eleven and informative one to two, as modified in line with comments from councillor Tansin, permission be granted. So those in favour, please show.
Six in favour.
Those against?
Six against.
Any abstentions?
Three abstentions.
No, four.
Sorry, four abstentions.
Okay, so it's tied vote, so I'll have to ask advice. Okay, I vote in favour, so I'll repeat my vote in favour. So that was passed. So move on to item B2, west side of Green Lane, Badshot Lee. And so... So did I, everything came back to last minute, so the presentation will appear on the screen. Okay, please carry on.
Thank you, chair, and good evening, members, and thank you for your patience tonight with the technology. So members will recall that this application was considered back in December 2019, where the decision was deferred in order to allow officers and the applicant the opportunity to discuss improvements to the design and layout, as well as to seek additional information and clarification regarding ecological issues, SUDs, sewage disposal infrastructure and electric vehicle charging points. Following December's meetings, officers have engaged actively with the applicant in proactive discussions, which have resulted in the provision of amended plans and additional information. Members will be aware of the briefing pack circulated by the applicant last week, and I think some of you have a copy today. And the committee site visit took place on Friday last week. I draw your attention to the update sheet, which just corrects the parking numbers and confirms that the proposal exceeds the minimum requirements by seven point five spaces. And it also confirms that the County Highway Authority had no further comments to make on the amended plans. As a verbal update, I can confirm that the deed of variation to the legal agreement is now in agreed form. And I'll now turn to the presentation. So planning permission for this site has already been granted by Waverley Borough Council in November 2018. In the determination of the outline permission, the principle of 105 dwellings has been agreed. Therefore, the principle and quantum of the development has been agreed. This reserve matters application effectively seeks to discharge condition one of the outline consent. This is therefore not a new request for planning permission. Issues including highways, ecology, flooding and drainage were considered at outline stage and do not form primary considerations here. The application seeks approval for the matters that were reserved at outline stage. Those are layout, scale, appearance and landscaping. Site access from Lower Waven Lane was agreed at outline stage. And it's important to note that the site is an allocated housing site in both the Waverley local plan and the Farnham neighbourhood plan. So just as a reminder, the application site is located to the south of Lower Waven Lane in Badshot Lee. The site is bound to the north and west by existing residential development. To the south is an open field and to the east is electricity depot. Members will note that power lines run across the south-eastern corner of the site, which do pose a constraint to the layout. As noted in the officer report, the council's environmental health officers and Scottish and Southern electricity networks have been consulted at both outline and reserve matters stage and have raised no concern subject to the management of open space below the power lines. This is something that's controlled via the deed of variation to the legal agreement, which is in an agreed form. So turning to the site photographs, you'll note on this slide that the site is a flat, open field. You can see some fencing along the boundary of the site there. On this slide, I draw your attention to the existing play area at Wentworth Close, which additional access will be provided to as part of this scheme. I've also shown the location of the footpath that runs east-west across the site from Green Lane and leads on to Waven Road. I've also provided images of where the access punches through the boundary there. That was agreed at outline stage and is not for consideration. And also the access from Green Lane on to the footpath. Just to put some context, I've taken some images from the applicant's design and access statement of dwellings in the immediate area. So this helps to give an overview of the local character of the area. On this side, I've just put the proposed layout and I've kind of just put that there so we can refer back to it later, because I want to go on to the layout in context. So there's a few things I want to point out here. So I've already spoken about the aforementioned power lines that run across the site. These limits the location of where the development can occur within the site. The access from Lower Waven Lane was agreed at outline stage. That is not a matter to be considered here. That obviously is a constraint to the layout of the site. Officers are of the view that the layout follows an urban design principle in terms of a circular route through the development with strong frontage to rear associations. The proposed loop road formation is in keeping with that observed at Wentworth Close to the west. Good connections through the site provide access to Waven Road, local open space, additional play areas, the schools, shops and facilities in the Waven area. The flatted buildings to the front and rear provide articulation to the site and the flatted buildings to the rear is given a sense of place by virtue of its location overlooking the open space and fields to the south. I've provided here a grain plan. On the left, we see the existing grain and on the right, the proposed grain, where we can see that the proposed layout of the development would be in keeping with the grain of development in the site. So turning to the story heights, so this plan, just very briefly, is to show that we see a variation of building heights, which provides an idea of the design articulation. Larger buildings are noted to the centre of the site and in key locations throughout the site. In terms of the dwelling distribution, the scheme provides a mix of market and affordable housing, which is well integrated across the site. In terms of affordable housing distribution, as part of the amended proposals, the applicants have swapped one, three or two, three bed units from shared ownership to affordable rents. Officers consider this provides a greater spread of tenure across the site. The swapped, oh, it's not working, there it is. The swapped units are this one and this one. I've provided some, sort of, two slides of example housing types. And there's a few things I'd like to point out on these slides. So the design provides a range of roof forms, dual pitched gable ends, dormer windows, hip and barn hip roofs. There's a range of materials proposed, clay tiles, slate tiles, red brick, render, brick coining, and high-quality materials would be used throughout the site. In terms of detailing, we see porches, chimneys, good-sized fenestration and a hierarchy of window sizes. Given the variety across the site, officers are satisfied that there is a good design, which brings forward a sense of place. There is variation, which is common of local vernacular, and the proposal meets the technical space standards. In terms of landscaping, a two-metre buffer would be provided to the southern boundary with the public footpath. This would be in accordance with policy FMP 14B of the Farnham neighbourhood plan. And the applicant has provided a number of CGI's that give a sense of how the development would appear when it is built. So turning to the matters for consideration. In terms of housing mix and affordable housing, the proposed mix is considered to be acceptable. Thirty-two affordable homes would be provided, which would be compliant with policy AHN1 of the local plan part one. The applicant has entered into a contract with Astor Communities, who have confirmed their support for the proposal in terms of the unit mix, tenure split and location of units. They note that the development provides sensible areas for the registered provider to manage effectively. In terms of the appearance and landscaping, as I've already said, officers consider there to be a good design which meets urban design principles. In terms of the design scale and impact and visual amenity, there's a strong circular route through the site, a hierarchy of buildings and a good variation of design and materials across the site. In terms of residential amenity, the proposal would have an acceptable impact on neighbouring occupiers as set out in the officer report. We have already gone through the layout, but we, officers believe that the layout provides, that the site has a number of constraints which have led to the layout that is proposed, but we believe it to follow an urban design-led layout. The parking provision would exceed the minimum requirements by seven and a half spaces. In terms of standard of accommodation and amenity space, the proposal would provide a good standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space, including two areas of open space. And it often, it also provides connections through to other open spaces, such as the Wentworth Close play area and the rugby pitches to the south. In terms of waste recycling and cycle stores, these are provided across the site. Adequate curbside collection points are provided and communal bin storage is provided for the flats. Refuge vehicle tracking plans have been submitted, which demonstrate that the proposed layout can accommodate refuge vehicles satisfactorily. In terms of the internal highway arrangement, the means of access was approved at outline stage. The County Highway Authority have assessed the internal arrangement of roads and are satisfied that they are acceptable in terms of safety and access. So moving on to other matters. The approval of the proposed scheme would see the delivery of 105 dwellings. The applicant has indicated that they will be ready to start construction this spring, should they get approval tonight. The current five-year housing land supply statement accounts for these units being deliverable within the next three years. As I said at the start of the meeting, the deed of variation that accompanies this application is now in an agreed form. There are no technical consultancy objections to the scheme and Farnham Town Council are supportive of the application. Thank you, chair.
Thanks very much. So councillor Mayweather, you have four minutes on this item. And then at the end, you can come back and make a short comment at the end of the deliberation.
Okay, thank you very much, chair. So I'm speaking as the ward councillor for Waven and Badshot Lee. Two villages, Waven is a village. We are, we note the very cosmetic changes that have been made to the appearance. It's really the scale here that is causing some concern in the community. Scale, obviously, as I understand it, relates not only to the size of the development, to the individual houses as well that are in that development. And here we have a scale which is out of proportion, it's disproportionate to the character of the village. I'm not sure if you can scroll back to the photographs that you had earlier on while I'm talking. But the area around here is typified by bungalows, one-storey, one-and-a-half-storey bungalows and semi-detached houses. And that's a very interesting choice, very interesting choice of photographs you have there. In the left-hand corner, you have a one-and-a-half-storey bungalow, which is at the, I think that's at the southwestern corner of the junction of Green Lane and Lower Waven Road. On the right, on the opposite side of Green Lane to that one-and-a-half-storey detached bungalow, is a single-storey detached bungalow. And you only have to wonder why that one was picked and not the single-storey detached bungalow right next door to make the case. In fact, if you go all the way up Lower Waven Road, you see a mix of single-storey detached and semi-detached bungalows. You see a selection of semi-detached two-story houses. And if you go into Wentworth Close, you do see semi-detached houses, but you also see one-and-a-half-storey houses semi-detached as well. Whereas here, in this development, the scale of the individual houses starts at two-story semi-detached houses, not a single-storey or one-and-a-half-storey building on the plot. And despite the cosmetics, you have underneath them mass-produced Taylor Wimpy houses. You have mass-produced houses that you can buy according to their own website in the south-east, anywhere between Devon, Gloucestershire, Kent, Oxford, Hampshire and beyond. Structurally, no attempt has been made to integrate this site with the village. There were plenty of two-and-a-half stories in there, so not only in terms of the flats, but also in terms of the Elliston, two of those, two-and-a-half stories, and the Colton, four of those, two-and-a-half stories. So that deals with the scale. Before I'm cut off, I'd like to talk to you about Sang. It's not apparent in your papers, but the Sang contribution here is not towards any Sang in our borough, it's not towards Farnham Park. It is going towards, or it is proposed that it goes towards a Sang at Naish's Wood, which is in Hart, round about four-and-a-half miles away. In fact, the residents, anyone moving into these properties, will have to drive past Farnham Park to get to the Sang that is going to benefit from this development. And forget about the site, the scale of the site and everything else. For the residents of Waven and Badshot Lee, it's unacceptable that the Sang money is going to a site by car nearly five miles away. I'm going to leave it there, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yes. I think there's a response on the Sang point.
Yeah, just to clarify, we did have this question from councillor Darcy earlier.
Yeah, just to clarify, we did have this question from councillor Darcy earlier before the meeting. Whilst there is a potential proposal from the developer to look at another site, the actual section 106 makes, means the contribution would go to Farnham Park. The current position is that the Sang contribution and the Sam contribution will go to Farnham Park, that is the requirement of the outline. I appreciate it's been a bit muddy because they, there is a suggestion of looking at another site, but Natural England have raised some concerns about that other site, so at this moment in time.
I'm sorry Zach, it wasn't a, it wasn't a suggestion, it's a letter and it's on the planning system requesting it.
But that has not been approved, what's been approved is a contribution towards Farnham Park and that is what we've got in the section, in the section 106, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, but yeah, proposal through a letter, absolutely, I understand that.
Comments from councillors? Sorry, might as well go back, councillor Else.
You forgot me already Richard.
Yes, well you sit at my side normally, I don't see you, so carry on.
Yes, obviously we can all sympathise with the residents of Badshotley and Wayborne Lane, that it's not ideal, but it's certainly a lot better than the scheme that was presented to us for reserve matters before. And I think it goes to show what we, what can be achieved when the JPC flexes its muscles and says to developers, I'm sorry, we're not going to accept mediocre, we're, you know, we're Waverley Borough Council and we expect something better. And I think we've got something a lot better this time, and I'm much happier with the design, albeit that they're going to be bog standard houses, but at least an effort has been made to make them look a bit more of the area. The only thing that does concern me is I would like to see the usual condition removing PD rights if that's possible, thank you.
Councillor Coburn.
Thank you Chairman, yes, I remember being accused in this very chamber by QC, the devil with you councillor Coburn, you're always wanting the best, you're always wanting perfect, and perfect's the enemy of the good. And, you know, he was absolutely right, you know, in my ideal world, I wouldn't be looking at this tonight. I'm with councillor Else on here, I think it has been improved. As I say, I would like more parking because parking in Webber and Badshotley is a total nightmare, 7.5, well, I suppose we should be grateful. But I just think it's okay, I think it's certainly better than the last one, I think the palette is better, it's, if you go through Badshotley, I mean you do see a huge range, I mean that's what makes it so interesting. You know, you're never faced with that, with that, with one sort of mass palette, you know, and obviously with people changing things and adding dormers and whatever, the character changes slightly. So, yes, I would like more parking, yes, I would like certain aspects of this slightly changed, but I think on the whole, we've sent them back, they've done what we asked them to do to a greater or lesser extent, and I think I will be supporting this this evening, thank you.
Councillor Edmonds.
Thank you Chair. Based on the National Planning Policy Framework, paragraph 55, paragraph 91, paragraph 109, paragraph 117 and paragraph 130, local planning authorities should also seek to ensure that the quality of approved development is not materially diminished between permission and completion as a result of changes being made to the permitted scheme. I'd like to know how we invoke those controls. The other questions I have is that there's no reference to the Surrey Transport Plan Air Quality Strategy January 2016, which is currently a valid strategy as advised by Surrey County Council. On the powerline restrictions, how are they enforced? That's on page 53. When I look at the pavements, throughout my career as a blue collar worker in the steel industry, designing oil and gas installations, trip hazards have always been a significant issue. When I look at the drawings or the photographs that have been sent to me, there seem to be countless trip hazards on the pavement, which would be a hazard to children, elderly and anybody who is disabled. I'd like to see how those trip hazards could be removed. Then the final question is, what is half a parking space? Thank you.
I'll do the easy one first, half a parking space is for a very, very small car. In terms of changes to the scheme, you're quite right in terms of how they're controlled. They're controlled in two ways, one is through a non-material amendment under section 96A, whereby an applicant can apply for, to the local authority if they want to change, I don't know, window sizes, door colours, that sort of thing, very minor stuff, and then we'll assess whether or not actually that changes the fundamental character of the scheme, if it does, then we refuse that application, we require them to submit what's called a minor material amendment under section 73. But what I would want to reassure you is what you're faced with and what you're being asked to consider tonight is what you're approving, you're not approving that plus any changes, because if there are any fundamental changes, they would come through a section 73 application, which would be advertised in the usual way, and if members felt that that needed to come back to committee for consideration, then that would be your right to call that into a committee. So, so there are controls over that. In terms of the transport strategy, I think possibly the reason it's not directly relevant or mentioned in here, it is an adopted strategy, you're quite right, but the provision of the development, the principle of development and the point of access has all been considered at the outline stage, those have already been approved under the outline. So all you're looking at now is landscaping appearance, scale and the other one, layouts, layouts. So it wouldn't be direct, whilst it might be a strategy that is of some relevance in other areas, it wouldn't be directly, wouldn't change the officer's recommendation in this instance. Powerlines, as I say, we have consulted with the relevant power bodies and they're satisfied with the location of the play area. Trip hazards, I think perhaps we're going beyond what members can realistically consider as part of a planning application, I mean, you're really not here to consider whether or not a pavement should be 0.5 metres high or 0.2 metres high. Obviously, if they're adopted roads, that will be dealt with under the Surrey County Council's highways function. If they're private roads, then there'll be a responsibility on whoever does maintain or own those props, those roads, to make sure that they're safe and they would take due care on those matters. So I don't, whilst I take your point about trip hazards, I don't think members need concern themselves in that, and it certainly wouldn't be a reason for refusing permission in this instance, thank you.
Councillor Edmonds, can I come back briefly on that?
Yes, please, I would like to come back. So as far as I can understand, there is no obligation whatsoever to check that what is built is actually what has been permitted. And the second point I will make is, with those trip hazards, there's no way that I could support this development. Thank you.
Just to say, we do have an enforcement team. If a development isn't undertaken in accordance with the approved development, then we investigate and we will take appropriate action, dependent on the nature of any breach. In terms of your own position on voting, of course, that's a matter for you as an elected member, thank you.
Just to come back to the trip hazard issue, obviously the county highway authority have assessed the internal arrangement layout and have raised no issues with regard to safety, thank you Chair.
Councillor Hess.
Really pleased that Taylor Wimpy are going to put in superfast fibre into each home. As you probably all know, from April, any developments over 20 houses can get superfast fibre from open reach, pretty much at no cost. So that's a step forward definitely. Just a shame that part of the consultation from Farnham Town Council Planning and Licensing Working Group about consideration should be given to the way services are installed and accessed to allow for future upgrades without impacting the local amenity. Now, what that's referring to is common ducting, and the provision of electric vehicle charging points to each house is good, but it's the provision to the blocks of apartments where there's, it's falling back on Surrey County Council guidelines where it's basically providing for 20% of charging points only. Now, if they had common ducting running around the curbs, they could put in additional charging points as required, it'd be so easy. And it's just, I just flag it up, it's probably going to get no traction here whatsoever because it doesn't tend to unless Philippa's got something exciting to tell me, but it just doesn't get any traction, we're going to have to go a lot higher in central government to get these rules changed, I think. But I just flag it up, if they put in common ducting around the curbs where the cars are parked, they could future proof it so that if we do go electric, if that's the way it goes, then future users can put in a charging point at a cost, not free, to charge up their car or one of these magnetic pads. It would be easy, you wouldn't have to dig up the ground, disrupt gardens and pathways, it'd be so simple, but hey, they're not going to do it because it costs money. So I just flag it up, it's going to cause problems downstream in years to come. If we do go electric and there's only 20% provided and 20% wiring, that's 60% without, you might get charging point battles by residents over who gets to charge up their vehicle. I just flag it, thank you.
Philippa, do you have any comfort for councillor Hess?
To an extent, I think so. So condition 12 of the outline permission requires a scheme to be put forward for the electric vehicle charging points, so the acceptability and suitability of the scheme that's put forward will be assessed at the point at which that condition is discharged against the relevant guidance at that time. So I think that the relevance of that condition really is that it will be assessed at the point in which it's submitted rather than now, if that makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry Chairman, can I just add that we have Taylor Wimpy representatives in the audience, so they will have heard your points there councillor Hess.
Councillor Townsend.
Thank you Chairman. I like councillor Else's degree that this is, this does look like a much better application than what we had before, and, you know, I'd like to thank Taylor Wimpy for that, for listening and for coming forward with something, something much better. Originally there was an objection on the application from Thames Water to say there was, you know, inconsistent capacity within the network to, for the sewage, and I know that's now been sorted. However, there was also a comment on their letter to say the water supply wasn't under their control and it was south east water or something. Now, I looked at the application because water supply is a really big thing, I mean in Cranley we've had problems with our water supply in, you know, in hot weather, with our climate emergency. It's very important that we know in an area of water stress that there is enough water supply for these new homes. So I looked into the application and on Southern Water, Southern Water were then approached and said, they didn't not object, they said, no, it's not us either. So I'm just a little bit concerned that we haven't established who is going to supply the water to this, and if there is something, I apologise, you know, against the application or maybe it hasn't been put in against the application, but I haven't seen anything to say about the water supply, so I would really like some reassurance on that, on that ground. And the other thing is just a small thing, on the overhead cables, which I appreciate do limit certain areas of the site, where it goes over the playground area, the green space, it said about having signs up to warn the children, you know, not to play ball games and things, and I just wondered whether or not that, I know you said about a maintenance agreement for it and we've got lots more information to go into that, but whether or not it should be in the condition put that there should be some signs, whether or not we should strengthen up that condition, just also as an aide memoir or whether it needs to be an informative, just, you know, if another officer comes along, I wouldn't want that particular point to be dropped off somewhere. So one about the water and then two about the signs please, thank you.
I was just going to come back on point one, which is around the water supply, and it's a bit of a basic answer, but, I mean, I think the developers just wouldn't bring forward, wouldn't bring forward the housing unless they were able to provide water supply because, to the houses, because they wouldn't be able to sell any of the properties if they didn't have a water supply. I mean, I know that's quite a simplistic answer, but that's a matter for them to resolve with the water boards, the relevant water companies.
I appreciate that Zach, but it actually says no objection on the actual written document, it says Southern Water didn't object, which isn't right. Southern Water said, oi, it's not me, and Thames Water said, oi, it's not me either. So I'm just saying for the accuracy of the report, it's not no objection, it's no water.
No water, okay, apologies, point noted for the next time. I'll just pass on to Philippa for a point about the request for an informative.
Thank you, thank you for the question. We can certainly put on an informative regarding signs etc, but I would note that the deed of variation to the section 106 requires the open space management plans put forward, and that would be a requirement within that so that that open space was sufficiently managed and was safe for the users of that area. So we opted to have that in the legal agreement to really secure that element of the proposal rather than by condition, thank you.
I'm very happy for an informative, yeah.
Councillor Follows.
Thank you Chair, I was unable to actually go to the site visit but have gone separately to have a look at some of the issues that councillor Mayweather has flagged. I do agree with the particular issue regarding the materially different scale of some of the housing, I do think that there is a predominance of one and one and a half storey houses nearby and these are quite a lot bigger, so I do very much accept that. The other question I had was about the affordable housing distribution, I mean, I know that is better and not, certainly not the worst we've seen in terms of clustering, but I don't, you described that as well integrated, it is quite tucked away down in one corner, the shared ownership and the affordable housing, and I'm not entirely, can you just elaborate on what you mean by well integrated in that context? I assume they all look the same as the market housing and there's no other material distinction in that way, but I'll wait to hear on that one. But otherwise, I accept that this is better than the previous one, I agree with councillor Else's comments that this does show that when we do kick it back, we do get better versions and we should keep doing that. I note that space is a good thing in this application where it was written off in others, even this evening, so I'll take that one on board separately. But yes, I think this is better, certainly, I'm not thrilled by it in lots of ways, but certainly it is a lot better than it was, and I think it's not so much gleefully supporting it, but acknowledge that we'll need to support it based on what we've seen. So other than that, if you could just comment on the elements raised.
Thank you. So yeah, in terms of the affordable housing, okay, it's acknowledged that there's two areas of affordable housing, but we believe that the layout provides really good circulation around the site, so they're not sort of tucked away in a corner. It's an improvement to have it, the distribution that is now put forward. The housing and enabling officer is more than happy with the proposal, and we have got the consideration of the letter of support from the housing provider that supports the location of it in terms of their management of the properties and, yeah, and is supportive of the tenure and the mix and their locations, thank you.
Can you just confirm the look of them is integrated with the market housing?
Yeah, thank you, sorry, sorry to have missed that, yes, that's correct, there's no difference, thank you.
Councillor Clark.
Thank you Chair, I'd just like to say a couple of things about scale and bog standardness. I do appreciate that there are a lot of bungalows in the area, but I don't think we can expect a developer to be building bungalows. I think many people would actually move into these houses at the drop of a hat, and I suspect many local residents might want to as well, not all of them clearly. They are mass produced, but so are many of the products that we buy every single day. Our first two houses were mass produced, but we turned them into homes as soon as we bought them, so I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Councillor James.
Thank you Chairman, I'll be supporting it. It's a great improvement on what it was, and in, I don't know, 20 years, 30 years, we've come a long way from what used to be the Barrett Box Estate. You couldn't call this Barrett Boxes. And I do understand that, you know, they're called bog standard, but they're going to build 105, I don't know, 100 houses at one time, the village that I'm in has got less The village that I'm in has got less than that. My house is 500 years old. Well, if you want that to be built over 500 years, then they would all be different and individual, but we don't do that anymore because there's a housing need. So they have to be built for the right prices. Okay, they're all expensive, but they still wouldn't be, they'd be much more expensive if every one was custom-built to each person's design. And so for what is a housing estate in the 2020s, it's actually a very good example and they have listened. But I would ask that permitted development rights are removed, as my absolute big beef, as councillor Els knows, because that has bottom right, that semi detached there, before you could say Jack Robinson, there'd be two bits going up on either side to put another bedroom up there in the roof. And then that makes, if that's a two or three-bedroomed house, it becomes another one, shortage of cars and more people. So removing permitted development rights is absolutely my priority. So we've got the right housing mix of sizes of houses. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Can we add a point about development rights?
Hi, thank you. So condition seven of the reserve matters looks to remove PD rights for windows and dormers. Is that?
Well, I think one of the main concerns that was raised was around, councillor Follows mentioned it, councillor Merryweather mentioned it, was around the propensity for two and a half storey dwellings. I think if you were to remove, as we're proposing, the permitted development rights for dormer windows, you can control, you can control that. In terms of the rest of the layout, garages, et cetera, the government sort of advises that conditions, sorry, permitted development rights should only be removed in exceptional circumstances. I think certainly I can see a justification on windows and dormer windows in terms of protecting neighbour immunity and the character of the area in terms of going up. I would struggle with stopping someone putting on a conservatory or a small garage or a shed or something like that. Personally, but it's your decision.
councillor Dinos.
Just a very quick point, it's probably towards Zach, actually. I mean, this design is better than what it was. Still can't say I'm jumping for joy with it, but it's the best of a bad thing. My question or observation is why we have to go through this process and all the big applications where we have to then kick them back to do a proper, you know, at least try and make it integrate within a community. So it's my plea to the planning department that actually making them a lot of work is making the applicants a lot of work and with doubling our meetings, we should be at an early stage saying, that is a really rubbish, I'll choose my words wisely, rubbish design, go away, redesign it. Because, otherwise we won't pass it. I'm glad we'll get there and I would support this because I think it is a better design. I'm just disappointed we've had to now spend hours and various meetings.
Zach will tell us how it's going to change it all going forward.
Point certainly understood. I went to an ONS committee quite early on in my tenure here, where we were talking about appeal performance. And one of the, one of the things that I wanted to encourage is greater member involvement at an early stage, particularly ward members. Appreciate there's tensions and you can't get to the point where members who particularly sit on committees, either the area committees or the joint planning committee, get to a position where they fetter their right to vote or are seen to have prejudged an application. But I think we can certainly be a lot cuter about involving local ward members who know their communities, know the character of the area much better. And that's certainly something I want to encourage through, not just at the early planning application stage, but certainly through pre-app as well. And that's something I'm working on and will bring forward and certainly welcome advice from any of you on how we can make that work, you know, in reality. So it's certainly one of my ambitions as your new head. Thanks.
I think we've turned it to a conclusion here. I've got two more speakers. councillor Dixon.
I was reading this over the weekend and I was actually quite pleased. I'm on the Waverley Cycling Forum and I think I was very pleased to see that we seem to have two things in here which are going to help the cyclists. We've got £30,000 which is going towards the Blackwater Valley Cycle Scheme. And then they've got an improvement of the shared pedestrian cycling facility on Green Lane. I just wanted to check and make sure that this is actually two distinct pots of money and that we're not going to lose both these projects or try and merge them at some future date. Because I think in Farnham at the moment, we're seeing a real interest in electric bikes and people are starting to cycle a lot more. So this is a very, very useful piece of infrastructure and I would really like us to keep that. And I see that Farnham Town Council has agreed this and approved this, so yeah, it looks good to me. But yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So those amounts were agreed at outline stage and would be as part of the reserve matters. And I think we can clarify after the meeting that they are separate projects. I think they are, but we can certainly clarify that following the meeting if that's helpful.
Yes, it certainly does clarify that because it's very, very useful and a lot of people will use them, particularly there's so many schools round here. It'd be very useful. So yes, let's keep those commitments because it'd be very, very, very good.
councillor Dawson.
I just wanted to ask about the condition 17. There's an email from Surrey Wildlife Trust which suggests that they have some issues with the Lemp and we haven't actually got access. I haven't seen a copy of the Lemp. Is it available?
Thank you. Just bear with me a second. So the requirement for the Lemp is part of the outline permission. And I understand, having liaised with Surrey Wildlife Trust this week, that the applicant, their ecologist and Surrey Wildlife Trust are currently in discussions about the suitability of the Lemp. So that's not something that's being considered here, but they are in discussions about the Lemp and making sure it is suitable and in order to discharge condition 17 of the outline. Thank you.
councillor Wilson.
I went to a very interesting briefing with the utility suppliers at the local Surrey County Council Committee. They asked if we could encourage developers to actually get all of the utility people together at one time. They say one of their biggest problems is actually staggered road digging up. And they asked if we could actually encourage them as a planning authority to do a bit of joined-up thinking and get the water, the electricity, the gas to work together to get these utilities into developments. I don't know if we can ask them or we can make any condition.
Through you, Chairman. We certainly couldn't condition that, but if you wanted us to put an informative to say that the committee would urge the developer to try and coordinate the, you know, the utilities, construction works on site, that's an informative note that we could certainly put on the application. I just want to come back on the Lemp point for councillor Darcy. Just wanted to make it clear that although she didn't explicitly say it, the condition 17 says that development cannot take place until the Lemp has actually been agreed in writing. So those discussions are ongoing. Once the Surrey Wildlife Trust or whoever have confirmed that they're okay with that, then we'd be in a position to discharge that condition on the outline. But please rest assured, it's, you know, it is being dealt with and will be, it would only be discharged when it seemed acceptable.
councillor Hess, you have another short point to make?
Yeah, very short. I'm currently in communication with Taylor Wimpey regarding the proper reinstatement of Crondle Lane adjacent to the Abbey View development, which is currently under construction. Because they resurfaced the east side up to the centre line and they didn't resurface the west side adjacent to Waynefleet Lane, which is rough. And I've had complaints from neighbours and residents about this.
Is this a matter for this application?
So what I'm asking, because, yes, because it's the same developer, can it be conditioned, can it be made a condition that they do a proper and full reinstatement outside this development where it joins existing roadways? 100% good reinstatement?
Sorry, could you?
Well, they're doing a connection to a public highway, an adopted highway. So under the agreement that the works, they'll have to have an agreement with Surrey County Council to do those works and part of that will be reinstatement of any works they undertake that affect it. So it will be dealt with, but not by us, it will be dealt with through, an agreement through Surrey County Council Highway to your responsible.
So speak to your Surrey County councillor about the matter.
So we've got no influence on that.
councillor Coburn, do you have a short point?
No, very quickly, it's really an informative. We have said before, because Webber and Badshot Lee are really active in the community, that we've put an informative before to say that although the permission's been granted, ongoing discussion with the local community would be helpful. And certainly with some of the developments, you know, just little tweaks later on, nothing, no big changes. And they've really come up with some good ideas. So can we put a, just add, I know we've got a list as long as your arm of informatives, but just something to encourage ongoing communication with the liaison, that's a good word, with the local community.
Yes, I know in Cranley we've had good communication with some developers and poor with others, so it is helpful if that carries on. Okay, I think we've done here. Can we move to a vote? I'm sorry, I wasn't going to forget you. Mark, do you want to come back with any?
I just want to thank you all for your time, for your thoughts, for your contributions. I appreciate everything you've said, particularly the very lukewarm nature of the support that you will probably give this development. Appreciate Carol Coburn's comments about Webber and Badshot Lee. They are two villages that have really stepped up to the plate in terms of the Farnham neighbourhood plan, cooperated, volunteered sites and have really played the game. And you can excuse them perhaps a little bit for feeling a bit hard done by when that comes back to bite them. To come back to, yes, well, actually to come back to councillor Dinos's point, one thing that struck me here, obviously I don't envy you guys on planning at all, I very rarely come along, but this evening, scale seems to have been an issue in both of the things. And in this particular case, the rather teasy sort of false hope of the use of the words 'up to' 105 dwellings on this application seems to have caused us to be, will be one of the main causes for us having to come back and look at it again. And I would just beg you, if you don't mean 'up to' in an outline planning permission, please just don't bother using it. It will save everybody a lot of time.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can move to a vote. So the recommendation that the reserve matters of layout, scale, landscaping and appearance be approved, subject to conditions 1 to 9, informative 1 to 6. And I think an additional informative. Can you just say what they are so we're clear?
Thank you, Chair. So we have an informative regarding utility companies coordinating services where possible, one regarding ongoing discussions within the local community and one regarding signs for the open space of the play area. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I carry on. And a section 106 agreement to secure deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend and secure the provision of 30% onsite affordable housing, amendments to the open space obligations, amended contributions towards the saying, as we discussed, and education infrastructure. So all those in favour, please show by hand.
16 in favour, Chair.
Any against?
One against.
Any abstentions? That's been passed. Right, thank you very, committee? Just make sure it's fixed by the next meeting, please.
Yes, of course.